Earlier today in the city council meeting, a number of measures were taken to streamline and increase the efficiency of council activities, stimulate our city's economy, and enhance environmental safety. Joining me today in making these announcements are City Clerk Anna Valencia, Chicago Department of Aviation Commissioner Jamie Ree, and City Treasurer Melissa Conyers-Irvans, as well as our Chief Sustainability Officer Angela Tobler. First, I'm pleased to announce that during today's city council meeting, Aldermen were able to use electronic voting for the very first time. And thanks to our clerk for taking that next step towards modernization of city council proceedings, and hopefully we can actually do more and get things digitally organized. Electronic voting, as many of you know, is fast, sustainable, and accessible solution to the challenges presented by traditional paper-heavy voting methods. By implementing this new system for city council, we will be able to bring more efficiency and transparency to city council processes. I think they actually like seeing their names up on the screen as the votes were rolling in. As Clerk Valencia will explain in more detail, this shift is critical. First up in her council modernization initiative, an effort that has been years in the making. I want to thank the clerk and her team for her deep commitment to improving city council procedures, and look forward to seeing more modernization goals to be met in the near future. Let's get rid of all the paper, shall we? Second, I'm pleased to share the city council's approved ordinance that will amend an agreement with the Illinois Tollway Authority, and Chairman O'Shea talked about this, so let me emphasize a couple of important points. This will allow for the transfer of 202 acres of city-owned land at O'Hare from the city to the highway authority, as well as grant the authority use of airport property during the construction of the planned I-490 toll road, which will connect the Jane Addams Memorial Tollway on the north and the Tri-State Tollway on the south. Thanks to its passage, this amended agreement has provided a clear path forward towards jobs, minority contracting opportunities, and improved airport access offered by the I-490 plan, and will help strengthen our economy and continue to make O'Hare International Airport competitive. Now more than ever, it's critical that we identify and pursue all viable options to increase our residents' access to good-paying jobs and other opportunities. And we're now one step closer towards that goal, and Jamie Ree will talk more about that in a moment. But I want to thank her publicly and her team. They do a tremendous job every day, and this is just one of many, I think, really groundbreaking initiatives, really led and partnered and nurtured by Commissioner Ree. Third, I'm happy to report that city council has passed an ordinance introduced by Treasurer Conyers-Irvan and myself that mandates the divestment of city funds from fossil fuel components. This is a huge step forward in our citywide goal of ensuring a clean energy future for Chicago and the rest of our planet. As stipulated by the ordinance, Treasurer Conyers-Irvan and her office will update the list of companies excluded from city investment, as well as report to the city council finance committee on whether or not any changes have been made to this list at least once per year. Incidentally, with the passage of this ordinance, Chicago has become the second-largest city, just behind New York, in the country to divest from funds from fossil fuels. Again, I want to thank the treasurer and her team for their leadership on this issue. This will help us become a nationwide leader in the fight to end our reliance upon fossil fuels. And before I close, I want to say a few words regarding the appointment of the 11th Ward Alderman. We will be making an announcement shortly about that, and I now will turn it over to
Thank you, Mayor. We are excited to make history today. We are the first major U.S. city to implement electronic voting. It is something that I think has been a long time coming, and I want to first thank the mayor for the budget resources to do this. I want to also thank Chairwoman Michelle Harris for helping us get the resolution passed last council to change the rules to allow for e-voting. I want to thank the city council members for their patience. If you are watching today, I know change is not easy. No one really likes it, but we do need to go into the 21st century. E-voting allows for more accessibility, it allows for openness and transparency in our government, it allows our residents to understand what is happening in city council in real time, and hold us accountable. And so this only builds more trust, and we always say at the city clerk's office, we are the link between community and government, and trust-building is so important, and this shows that we mean what we're talking about. This is the first implementation of city council modernization that you will be able to see. In the coming months, we'll be releasing new technologies. By the end or early next year, we'll be completely finished with a new Legistar system that's more easy, user-friendly. We will also be going paperless and digitizing our committee records from the back end to the front end, creating more seamless efficiencies that we need for our government, and easier for our residents to understand and follow along. We are working with the mayor's office of people with disabilities on ADA access and compliance, and making sure that we are accessible to everyone in Chicago, and we're very excited about this initiative. So today was history in the making, and we're excited over the next few months for the Aldermen to get used to this new procedure and e-voting. So thank you again, Mayor, and I'm happy to take some questions after everyone's done.
Madam Treasurer.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's very rare that I have an opportunity to stand both with the mayor, our first black woman mayor, as well as our city clerk. And when I just come in the room with them and look at these three women of color leading the city of Chicago, it just means so much. So today's vote on the divestment ordinance of fossil fuels was both historic and extremely important. I certainly want to begin with thanking Mayor Lightfoot for her support of this ordinance, and really thank her for seeing the importance of this divestment ordinance and what it does for the families of Chicago. The divestment ordinance that was just passed today by city council has put residents at the forefront of what we do. Fossil fuel companies are companies that burn fossil fuels and push carbon dioxide into our communities. Over the past 18 months, as Chicago Treasurer, I have already committed to divesting in these types of companies, and I have divested more than $70 million through sales and maturities. $70 million is hardly a drop in the bucket for the residents of Chicago. For Chicagoans, these dollars represent their future. Chicago is a member of C-40. We spoke a little bit about that this morning, and as the mayor just stated, behind New York, we are the second-largest city to divest in fossil fuels, but joined by so many others: San Francisco, Boston, Houston, Phoenix, Austin, and many more, even municipalities all around the world. Today, we asked the city council to cement through this ordinance, and they did that. The future of our city, as one that does not invest in fossil fuel companies, in companies that fail to protect our planet from climate change. The ordinance would also require that all future Treasurers deliberate and determine an exclusion list of fossil fuel companies on an annual basis, and prevent reinvestment in those that remain out of alignment with our values. This process will and should evolve to incorporate our growing understanding of the impact of climate change. I have often said that as our investment as a city, we must reflect the values of our residents. And I want to conclude with this. I am so proud, I say this every day, to be treasurer, but I am even more proud to be a mother, a working mother, who believes that we must do everything in our power to leave behind a better, cleaner, and healthier future for our children. Certainly, as I thank the mayor in my closing, I also want to thank Chairman Wagasback and Cardenas for their support of this ordinance, along with Alderman Hadden and Alderman Laspada for their support in making this ordinance a reality. And a special thanks, of course, to 350.org for their unwavering diligence, who were on the doorstep of my office as I took office in May 2019. So this is a great day in the city of Chicago. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is both an exciting and a historic day for the city of Chicago. As with today's city council approval of the agreement with the Illinois Tollway, the path is now clear for the realization of the Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Project. At the outset, I want to thank Mayor Lightfoot for her leadership and unwavering vision, without which this moment would not have been possible. From day one of her term, Mayor Lightfoot recognized the importance of this project, which is designated as both a federal government, a project of national and regional significance by the federal government. Mayor Lightfoot re-energized the city's collaboration with the Tollway to bring this tremendous project closer to reality by implementing a collaborative, solutions-driven approach towards the partnership with the Tollway. As a result, the city is now postured to deliver on a decades-long commitment to facilitate access to O'Hare from suburban communities such as Elk Grove Village, Itasca, Bensonville, and Wooddale. This agreement, as the mayor said, will support I-490 roadway along the western boundary of O'Hare, which will connect the Jane Addams Memorial Tollway on the north to the Tri-State Tollway on the south. It will also create a new interchange with Illinois 390, historically known as the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway. This agreement also results in phenomenal benefits for our city. As part of the agreement, the city will be granting rights to the Tollway for the construction of I-490 of about 202 acres of land in exchange for nearly $110 million. These payments and commitments coming from the Tollway will provide the city with an opportunity to activate new airport development projects that create jobs, secure contracting opportunities for small diverse firms of all sizes, and provide a front door for travelers to Chicago that each of us can be proud of. Again, I want to take the opportunity to thank Mayor Lightfoot for all of her leadership and commitment towards the city's collaboration. Also, thanks to the entire Tollway team, who tirelessly worked very hard over the last several years, as well as DePage County Chairman Cronin for his support, as well as Chairman O'Shea, Vice Chair Curtis, and the entire city council. This is truly an historic intergovernmental accomplishment and a project that will serve the benefit of this city for decades to come. Thank you.
And now, we're happy to take your questions.
Thanks a lot, Mayor. We'll start off with Erin Hagerty from the Daily Line. Go ahead, Erin.
I'm just wondering, what has been the delay in selecting the 11th Ward Alderman? Are there too many candidates to consider?
We need more time.
Were there issues with any of the candidates?
We needed more time.
And I'm guessing you'll have to schedule a special city council meeting to approve that Alderman?
When we're ready, we'll announce it, and then we'll take the appropriate action to make sure that we present the candidate before the Rules Committee and then before the full city council.
Tamon Bradley, WGM.
I think she was a little...
Do you have another one?
Yeah. Can you say anything about the, like, shortlist of candidates that the selection committee sent to you, like, what the makeup of those applicants are?
No, I don't think that would be appropriate. When we're ready to discuss it, we'll definitely let you know.
Tamon Bradley.
I have one more on that. Is it correct that you have to appoint someone by April 15th? Is that your understanding?
I think that the deadline is, I don't have the precise date, I know it's 60 days from the time of the vacancy. So I think that's roughly, give or take, a day or so, probably about right.
So you have to do it by then? Okay. Can I ask a question of the clerk, please?
Sure.
Older woman Tavara introduced an ordinance banning the spouse or family members of elected officials from lobbying the government. She says it's in direct response to words that your husband has been lobbying the city. What's your reaction to that?
Well, I have tremendous respect for the legislative process in the city council, and whatever ordinance they come out with, I will certainly abide by and respect. I will have to say that I do believe this is a political tool that my opponent has tried to use in the middle of a primary conveniently, to distract from the questions he has failed to ask about his dealings on Wall Street, who his clients were. Were they coal clients, working in coal manufacturers? Were they gun manufacturers? We still don't know, and his website went down. So I think that while this is a distraction on his part, I want to focus on the day-to-day of what we did today. Today was a lot of people coming together, working for decades, and we finally crossed the line to do something historic like e-voting, where we are creating transparency and accessibility for our residents. And over the last five years, as city clerk, that's what I've done. I've shown up to work and do the work of the people, and I'm really proud of that.
Craig Delamore, WBPM.
This one's for Mayor Lightfoot. Tomorrow morning will be another gas giveaway in various parts of the city and suburbs by Willie Wilson. Do you have any thoughts on whether this is just a good thing or a logistical problem, too?
Well, look, what I will say is this: People are hurting, and the gas prices that we're seeing, even for a regular tank of gas across the city, frankly, are outrageous. I saw, when I was on the South Side a couple weeks ago, that a tank of regular gas was going for about $5 a gallon. You know, I'm old enough to remember when a gallon of gas was way under a dollar. So seeing these gas prices surge, and I think you're probably old enough, too, Craig, that's why you're smirking. No, I mean, you think about, there are a lot of people who have to drive. They're dependent upon their car to get to work, to provide essential services and so forth. But the fact of the matter is, when gas surges, and the weight it has, and so quickly, they're certainly not getting a boost in their wages to accommodate that surge. So it's something that we'll be announcing, I think, some longer-term relief for residents. But I understand people are hurting and are looking for some kind of leg up when they're seeing prices like gas, but also other basic essentials surge with the price of inflation. So I get it, and we're going to do our part to make sure that we help people in this time of need.
And on another topic, can you give us any sense of what the status is of the gang forfeiture ordinance that was DNP'd at the last meeting, was not brought up at this one?
So we're doing a lot of conversation with people across the city who raise concerns, but frankly, I think we need to do more education around what this is and what it isn't, and when we, I think, finish that work, then we'll bring it back before the city council. And as you may recall, it was DNP'd at our request.
Mary Ann Aher, NBC.
Could I speak to this clerk, please? Thank you. While we reported initially on you omitting your husband's lobbying for two different years, and you did make corrections, there's actually a third instance where you also omitted in 2019. He was compensated then by Monterey. Monterey received a charter network contract in 2019. Will you be correcting that one as well?
I have talked to the Board of Ethics, and everything that I needed to amend, I have amended. As soon as I found out that we had made a mistake, a human error, I amended that day, and all of my paperwork is with the Board of Ethics.
But perhaps you need to look again at 2019?
I feel very clear. I talked to the Board of Ethics, and we have amended everything that I needed to amend, and I followed all the rules and regulations that were set forth.
While you reacted to the ordinance and saying you'd follow, don't you think it's a good idea to just eliminate any kind of hint of favoritism by keeping lobbyists who are spouses away from city business?
Well, my husband and I have very different careers. You know, he has his own thing, I have mine own. We support each other in different ways, but, so, we are already following the Board of Ethics rules, and we'll continue to do that. I think that looking at what happened with Madigan and other ethical behaviors before our time really makes people not trust us, and these kind of political tactics also makes people not want to be in politics, not want to trust us. And what I'm about is building that trust, and showing up in our communities, and doing things like e-voting, where you can actually see how your Alderman votes and not have to guess, and hold people accountable. So I am ready for openness and transparency. I've led with character integrity my whole career, and I'll continue to do so as Secretary of State. I don't think Secretary White would have endorsed me if I did not have the character and integrity, heart for people, compassion for people, and also know that I was ready to do this innovation and technology that we needed the Secretary of State's office, and take his work further. So I feel really good where we are, and I'm open to see what the city council will put before us.
Craig Wall, ABC7.
Mayor, first of all, let me clarify, yes, I can remember the gas prices. I think $0.27 is the lowest I can remember in the early '70s, but I was not driving at that point, not that old. On another note, there are multiple reports out there that Mike Quigley is polling for a possible run for mayor. Can we get your thoughts on another big-name person maybe jumping into the race?
You know, I've said this before, I'll say it again: What I focus on every day is doing my job. The politics will take care of itself.
You're not concerned that somebody like that would jump into the race?
Why would I be?
I don't know.
I'm not. I'm doing my job, I will make my case to the people, and the voters will be the ultimate decision-makers, but I'm not going to worry about who's up, who's down. You guys are into that horse racing and sport, I'm not. I'm focused on the here and now, what we need to do to make sure that our city continues to thrive, that we have a vibrant recovery, and that we have a city that everybody in every neighborhood can be proud of, and they feel like they've got to stay. We've done a lot of great things in the city in the last three, almost three years, and particularly given that we have two years of a horrendous pandemic, there's a lot for us to be proud of, and we're going to keep talking about those issues and what the path ahead looks like.
Can you weigh in at all on this ethics ordinance that seems directed directly at your city clerk? Is this a good idea? Should spouses and partners be banned from doing business with the city to just keep everything above board?
Well, I haven't had the opportunity to look at the language, and, you know, the lawyer tells me that the devil's going to be in the details, but, sir, I'm talking.
Okay.
Okay. Could you, could you just? Are you done? Yeah, I'm sure you are, sorry. So let me try again, since we got interrupted by somebody who felt like they needed to talk while in the middle of someone talking. We have, like, a little rules and courtesy here, so...
Like letting the press ask questions?
Sir.
William, you have to stop.
Okay. Let me try for the third time, and maybe you'll let me talk this time. As I said, I have not read the text of the ordinance, and I'll do that, but I will tell you, I'm a little concerned that the chief sponsor has been a handmaiden of Mike Madigan. So we're going to look at that really, really closely. I think, you know, we have collectively, I think, a track record of being above and aboard, above board when it comes to ethics, and as I said, we'll look at the details, we'll sort it through, but as I said, I want to look at this very closely, given a source.
Allison from the Daily Line.
Madam Mayor, I have to ask, why am I being skipped?
You're not going to be skipped, sir.
Okay. If you say so.
Mayor, the select committee on the casino created in this vote today would be, if I'm not mistaken, the 20th City Council Committee. Some of the existing committees rarely meet. I guess why not send this proposal through zoning or economic development, an existing committee, and do you worry about Aldermen sort of being weighed down with all of these different disparate committees?
Well, the reason that I think it makes most sense for us to have a short-term temporary committee to deal with the casino, because if we broke it up into little parts, it would go to four or five different committees, and rather than do that, like, have a committee that's larger, composed of chairs and vice chairs, and people can weigh in in one fell swoop. It's not going to be unlike, and I think you heard this from Chairman Tony today, what's happened, for example, with the Budget Committee? People can weigh in, and they should. This is a very big, important decision. Every single member of the city council will have more than ample opportunity to participate, obviously, in the public engagement, the briefings, and then the committee hearing or hearings that will come once a final respondent is chosen to be the one that we want to submit to the IGB.
When you say three or four different parts, you mean, like, three or four different parts, you mean, like, the development aspect of it?
I said, I think, I think I said three or four different committees. If you just put this together, there'd be a zoning piece, there'd be transportation, relicensing, there's arguably a piece of budget, finance. Rather than have it separated out into lots of different pieces, we're going to have it in one committee, led by Chairman Tony, because lion's share of the work we anticipate will be through the zoning committee. It just makes sense for governance efficiency to have it in one place, and then, as I said, this is the beginning of a process, not the end of a process, multiple members of city council, all city council members who care, although I heard today that some people didn't want to be a part of it, which is kind of interesting, but anybody who wants to weigh in will be able to weigh in.
And then, just quickly for Commissioner Ree, if you could clarify the timeline on the West Access Project, when folks can actually expect to use that? I think Alderman O'Shea said something about 2040 today?
I do believe that they're already let contracts, and they've already started some construction. The majority of the construction in the south is what needs to be done, but I think what I have heard from the Tollway, and again, this is their timeline, they're doing the construction, it'll be somewhere around 2026. Elements of it to be able to, there's several different aspects of it with, I think there's four different elements connecting it to the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway, and then up to 90, and then down to 294, the legs, so there's several different elements, but I do believe that 2026 was what the Tollway had proposed about having some access available.
Ted from Cranes.
Mayor, will you still be doing the final selection of the casino, or will the special committee be winnowing down these three finalists?
Well, the way that I anticipate that it works, which is very typical of these things, is we will make a final recommendation to the city council, and the city council
Mayor, regarding the 11th Ward, can you say for sure you're not going to reopen applications, and the 27 who applied, it's going to be one of them?
You were moving your microphone back and forth, I didn't quite hear. You can just ask it again.
Regarding the 11th Ward, can you say for sure you're not going to reopen applications, and the 27 who applied, it's going to be one of them?
I don't anticipate at this point reopening, but I don't want to say never, but I don't anticipate that at this point.
Okay. On the vaccine mandate topic, what's the latest on the officers on no-pay status, and if it's still in the double digits, why the wait at this point?
I don't have the final numbers at my fingertips, we can certainly get that to you. What has been happening is, as you're aware, the final shot, if you will, mandated by the arbitrator has to be by April 13th, so there's still time for individuals to get fully vaccinated.
Becky Bavere.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi there, how are you?
Good, how are you? Alex asked one of my questions, but to follow up on it, will the casino proposal not go through zoning, or finance, or plan commission for that matter? Will all of those elements just go through the new special committee?
That's what I anticipate, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Craig, Brad.
Mayor, just on the police thing, if people haven't gotten both shots by the 13th, is that when we'll see more no-pay status, more discipline against officers?
Perhaps. Look, our goal here is not to be punitive if we don't have to. We want to try to educate people into compliance, and every single day, we're seeing more and more officers who are getting vaccinated that hadn't been vaccinated before. We just got a ruling earlier this week, I believe, that the appellate court rejected the emergency motion filed by the police unions. So I think, look, the unions have frankly led their members to believe that they're never going to have to be in compliance. That made no sense for a whole host of reasons, frankly. Let's start with the fact that the number-one killer of sworn members of law enforcement over the last couple of years has been the COVID-19 virus. So for their best interest, in their health, and the health of their family, their partner, and the city, it makes sense for them to get vaccinated. But it also made no sense, because they've literally thrown many Hail Marys at any venue that they could, multiple courts, arbitrator, then when they didn't like the ruling from the arbitrator, they tried to go back to the court, then they went to the appellate court. The bottom line is, you got to comply. Every court that has looked at this issue, that is, where we've been, our management authorities have been tested, has helped held our right as the employer to require the COVID-19 vaccine as a condition of employment. So I'm just encouraging those officers who have been on the fence, who have listened, frankly, to their peril, to the FOP, to take care of yourself and take care of your family by getting vaccinated. So it's my hope and expectation that the vast majority will be vaccinated by April 13th, and if not, then we'll go from there and take the actions that we need to take.
All right, and then I had a question from Heather Sharone, which I'll read for her. Why wasn't the gang asset forfeiture ordinance called for a vote today? Does that indicate that you have failed to convince a majority of the Chicago City Council that it is good policy, and will you drop your push for its approval?
I think I already answered that question.
All right, William Kelly.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Why are you telling me?
Because you can't behave. Excuse me, don't hit me with the microphone, okay? Not again. Why, I mean, every other reporter held the microphone.
Sir, can you please ask your question?
Every other reporter held the microphone.
I don't believe that that's correct, but go ahead.
I have it on camera. Every single reporter held the microphone.
Can you ask your question, sir?
Why, come on, don't be, don't be a...
Why, come on, don't be, don't be a jerk. Can you just hand me the microphone?
Do you have a question, yes or no?
I have a lot of questions.
Ask your question.
Okay, so Mayor Lightfoot, every time I ask you about crime in Chicago, you say crime is down. Real Chicagoans know that that's not true, that crime is up. Violent sexual assault, it's on the news every day, up. Violent carjackings every day, up. Hidden run, 100-day hidden run of Chicagoans.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yes. The obvious question that I've been asked by real Chicagoans to ask you is, are you lying, or are you incompetent?
I doubt very much that that's a question you've been asked by anyone.
That's a real question from real Chicagoans.
So I'm going to, I'm going to try to treat you...
Actually, that's not the exact wording. I'm trying to clean it up.
Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to answer the question.
And then I have a follow-up.
The data speaks for itself.
The data.
And on all of the, all of the measures that you've just talked about, homicide shootings, carjackings, down this year, sir. Sorry to disappoint you, but that is the...
178% increase in carjackings, violent carjackings in downtown Chicago.
No, you are, sir, carjackings in our city are down.
Millennium Park?
God.
Okay.
You are one of the rudest people I've ever seen. You really are.
I am?
Yeah, you are, sir. You are, sir.
I would think that carjackers would be the rudest people.
Well, no, you're rude in this room.
Okay.
Because you, you want to give a speech and pontificate, but you don't actually want to listen to the facts. And the facts are, while nobody's taking a victory lap, while we have a lot more work to do, the fact of the matter is, carjackings are down, shootings are down, and homicides are down. You have another question to follow up, sir?
I do indeed. The reason why workers do not want to return to the downtown offices, the reason why tourism is obviously flat, flatlined, is because people are afraid of the violent crime, especially in downtown Chicago, River North, Streeterville, Millennium Park, Grant Park. We have every single day violent carjackings. Gun to the head.
Sir.
Gun to the head, violent carjackings.
Please, I'm going to ask you, I've been very patient with you. You come in here and you give a speech every single time. Just ask your question. Be a real journalist, ask your question.
A very disturbing development with the violent carjackings is they are primarily being carried out by teenagers. And when I say teenagers, I mean 14, 15, 16-year-old black children.
I'm aware of the data, sir.
What is the reason for this, and what is your plan at long last to solve this problem?
Well, first of all, let me just say this: We are actually seeing an increase in the number of people that are coming back downtown. And it's certainly an increase over last year and month over month, and we're part of the reason that we've heard from employers, that's why they still haven't brought back all their employees, is because of, first, the Delta, which we were experiencing in the fall, and then Omicron, which we were experiencing at the end of the year and the beginning of this year. Where our expectations, based upon our regular conversations with employers and building owners, is that we're going to start to see more and more people come back downtown. So once again, sir, it's really important that you get your facts right. Yes, you're, you are right on one point, which is that a number of people that are involved in our carjackings are juveniles. We're arresting people who are juveniles that have three, four, five, six pending cases. The answer, the answer, the answer there is, we've got to get the courts, frankly, to take this seriously. We don't, I don't agree that we lock up juveniles and throw around the key, throw away the key, but what we must do is not just do nothing, which is what unfortunately was happening right now. So we are working with the state's attorney, we're going to be reaching out to the public defender, but other stakeholders, to make sure that we're intervening with these kids. So for example, there was an infamous story of an 11-year-old who was arrested last fall, who was a leader of a carjacking crew. Because of the work that's been done to intervene with that young boy, to change his life around, he was growing up in very, very difficult circumstances. He's now in a stable home setting, he's going to school regularly, and I'm told that he just made the honor roll. That's one case, but what, if you want to do call and response, this isn't...
Please don't interrupt, William.
This isn't the place, this isn't the place for it. So I think I've answered enough of your question. Thank you all very much.
Thanks a lot, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.